Anna Shepherd and Jill Spearing, if they both want to come up. I think we only have three seats up here. Okay. We brought the whole army, didn't we? That's good. How you doing? Whoever. Spearing, are you gonna?
You sit in the middle. I see. This is my seat here.
Thank you all very, thank you very much for being here. I noticed you brought several board members. We've got Ms. Anna Shepherd, who is the chair, Ms. Amy Froeg, and Ms. Pierce. Thank you all for coming. And Ms. Spearing is gonna represent you, I see, today, so she'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Joseph, I guess we'll just let you get started and kind of explain to us what's going on. And you wanna?
Can I kick you off?
You can do that. Yeah, sure.
Okay.
You'll do it in whatever order you want to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see, good to be here today and good to see all of you. I wanted to say a special thank you to Vice Mayor Bryley. And again, recognize my board members, Amy Froeg. The Vice Chair of the Budget Meeting Committee is Mary Pierce. Our Chair is Anna Shepherd. And you will shortly hear from Dr. Joseph and also Ms. Henson. Since the Nashville School Board hired Dr. Joseph a year ago, we have worked diligently as a team to articulate comprehensive values, mission, vision, statements, and a set of values that we believe captures the reality and the potential of the 42nd largest school district in America. I'll let Dr. Joseph and Mr. Henson speak to the details of our request. As Chair of the school's Budget Committee, I just want to open the conversation with some brief remarks about how we've approached this work by grounding it in our values. The Board believes that the budget should reflect our values. Today, we are proud to present our proposed and revised budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year that reflects the values of the school system, this metropolitan government, and the broader community. As much as anything, we value equity. Specifically, and I quote, "We believe in equitable access and opportunities for all students from early childhood through graduation." In multiple categories, this budget speaks to this fundamental value. Another value is talent. We believe in supporting, developing, compensating, and retaining our teachers, leaders, and staff. We believe the pay raises contemplated for teachers and staff will help in our ongoing efforts to recruit and retain the very best talent from in the city, across the region, and around the country. We value relevance. We believe students learn best when they are inspired by real-world challenges that promote critical thinking, inquiry, problem-solving, and creativity. This value cuts across our entire plan, including Dr. Joseph's strategy to elevate and amplify the work in our middle schools. Finally, I want to speak directly to a value that's closest to my heart: literacy. Last year, when the school board interviewed Dr. Joseph, he made a statement that led me and the other eight members of the Board to believe that he was the right person at the right time. He said, and I quote, "If we focus on culture with a lens on literacy, every child will succeed." Our collective belief is articulated in our value statement about literacy. We believe what research shows, early reading success is a critical factor in a child's likelihood of graduating from high school and experiencing future life success. National research indicates that students who do not read proficiently by third grade are four times more likely to drop out of school. And when you add poverty to that mix, research shows that those reading below grade level are 13 times less likely to finish high school. Of course, in Nashville, 74% of our students live in poverty. Moreover, about 3,000 of our 86,000 students are technically classified as homeless. So this national research, combined with our difficult local statistics, tell us that we must prioritize literacy. All of our other initiatives fall by the wayside if we don't build a strong base for literacy for each of our students. We're pleased to report that we're headed in the right direction. This year, all 73 elementary schools are working in a literacy partnership with Lipscomb University. Through this partnership, classroom teachers receive outstanding training and support. The work we started a few years ago and that you have generously funded will continue and expand under Dr. Joseph's leadership in the upcoming school year. The Reading Recovery Acceleration Model has gained momentum and is offered in 32 elementary schools with 63 teachers. Several of you have observed a reading recovery lesson behind the glass. If you have not already observed this highly effective personalized program, I encourage you to accept an invitation in the upcoming year. Reading recovery will be expanded in this budget. When we disaggregated the data this year, we discovered that impoverished students suffer significant summer reading loss. So this budget includes a request for summer school opportunities to support these students to retain the knowledge they've gained. Preliminary data from formative assessments indicate that these kinds of strategies have put us on the right track. Other tools are being utilized to confirm our progress. But as you know, and we know, much work remains. We are committed to literacy and our other values as a means to fulfill our ultimate vision, which is Metro Nashville Public Schools will be the fastest-improving urban system in America, and every student will be a lifelong learner prepared for success in college, career, and life. At the April 26 State of Metro address... Yes. At the April 26 State of Metro address, the mayor announced a $36 million increase for the school's allocation. This increase is needed, it's welcomed, and it's vital to achieving the priorities we have identified. In an effort to prioritize the allocations of these resources, the Board undertook a series of steps. We scheduled additional Budget Committee meetings to collaboratively discuss fiscal options with Dr. Joseph and his staff. My Vice Chair, Mary Pierce, and I engaged in ongoing conversations with the Director to make certain that the direction of fiscal decisions were supportive of our strategic plan. And finally, the Board held an additional public hearing to be certain constituents' priorities were reflected in the budget revisions. To further discuss specific priorities, I'll hand this over to our Director of Schools, Dr. Shawn Joseph.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Spearing. I want to thank Ms. Spearing, as well as Mary Pierce, our Budget Chair and Vice Chair, for their extraordinary work in helping us really look through this budget and, as she just shared, making sure that it's aligned to our strategic priorities. And I want to thank Anna Shepherd and the rest of the Board for their leadership in this first year on the job. I'd also like to thank Chairman Cooper and Chairman Kendall, as well as Vice Mayor Bryley, for having us here. This city is extremely fortunate to have your leadership. As you were sharing your presentation, I just, that Martin Luther King speech, when he said, you know, "When's the time? Now's the time," just kind of kept reading through, kind of going through my brain as we were going through this. And as you know, here in Nashville, I mean, now's the time, I mean, for us to make true the reality of a high-quality education for all children within this district. And, you know, as you know, a Vanderbilt study recently conducted public opinion research regarding the city's top priorities, and 86% of our residents responded that investing in public schools and bolstering the quality of our public school system should be the city's top priority. And I'm here, not only as the Director of Schools, but I'm actually here as a parent, as I'll have a son who will be, you know, attending McGavick High School, and a daughter that's gonna be going to Dupont Hadley. And as I think about this work, it's hard to separate those jobs, like, they're both, because as brand-new parents, you know, you want the best for your children, and you want them to be in high-quality, you want them to have high-quality education opportunities, as do all the residents and all the families here, these 86,000 families that we have the proud responsibility to serve. So the budget proposal that the Board and I presented to the mayor's budget hearing outlined the resources needed to move us forward with that vision. As Ms. Spearing said, our goal is to be the fastest-improving urban district in America. To improve faster means you need an accelerant, and you need to be thoughtful about the resources that you have. And the Board and I have worked tirelessly this year to properly focus our resources and priorities, and we've developed a strategic framework, which you should have in front of you. And to better understand why we're investing where we are, I'd like to take a few minutes to just walk you through some of the highlights that are in that framework. So if you just open up on page 10 in that framework, page 10 kind of lays out, in this book here, it lays out for you the phases that we are going through as we are thoughtfully and strategically think about how we will utilize our resources. And you can see, we started off gathering input and information from July to January of last year, and then from December to April, we actually developed the strategic framework. So we took time to work with our communities, to think about everything that we've heard, to go back and forth, to lay out what are the areas of focus for us, and how do we prioritize? Where we are right now is, now that we know what we want to do, we have to make sure that we're accountable. So we're laying out what are the accountability measures that we're gonna put in place each year that we can clearly monitor. So when we come back to you next year, you know, you can say, "Well, you said you were gonna do this. Did you do it or not? And if you didn't, why not? And if you did, how do you move forward?" We want to be clear as we come through that, because we didn't have a framework that was laid out that clearly prior to this point today. So between June and July, we will, actually, once we have the baseline measures, we will develop a plan for implementation to say, what do we want to accomplish by year one? And then between July and June of next year, we'll develop the infrastructure and skill sets there. So, again, Phase 1 of our efforts began 10 months ago with a lot of listening and research. The Board and I visited every corner of the county, listening to the hopes and dreams of our families, our staff, and our community partners. We held 12 community meetings and listen-and-learn sessions that were attended by 2,400 parents, students, community members, and employees. We then had 15 additional meetings for teachers and staff to glean their insight about what we needed to do to improve the quality of our schools and to make Metro District the first choice of families within our district. From that data, we crafted a 100-day report and a comprehensive entry plan that mapped out our goals, our priorities, all of which were addressed. I also appointed a transition team that had 47 members, including Mr. Kendall, we thank you for your expertise, and other national experts and local thought leaders, principals and parents, as well as representatives from the broad community. That transition team worked in a subcommittee structure over the course of a five-month period with the charge to propose short-term and long-term recommendations for us, and that transition team's findings were also released in November, and the full report was released in February. All of this data and information from the public forums, the 100-day report, the transition report, were used to craft the strategic framework, which you have in front of you, which was approved by the Board in March. And I urge you to look through the major goals, and we have four. What do we do to take care of our students? How do we take care of our people? How do we take care of our organization? And how do we better support our community? And that begins on page 20 of that document and goes through page 34. Within this document, those pages outline our strategies, our performance measures, and the high-level actions that are gonna guide the next phase of our work. Again, in Phase 3, we're gonna be developing very detailed action plans that spell out what we must address in year one of implementation. Our focus right now is to identify the key performance indicators that we'll use to monitor and measure our progress. We should have this phase completed by midsummer, and then the real work is gonna begin as we start next school year. Again, as Ms. Spearing said, our vision is very simple. We want to be the fastest-improving urban district in America, and we want every student to have access to quality educational programs, services, and facilities. And we want to deliver on an exceptional, deliver exceptional learning every day for all students regardless of where they live in Davidson County. And we want to exceed high expectations so that students graduate college and career-ready. More detail about that vision, the characteristics of great schools, and the successful characteristics are found on pages 12 through 17 in this document. So again, that's just the specifics there. But now, let me just jump into while we're here in terms of the budget discussion. Our initial budget request was based upon that in-depth analysis that I just identified of district operations with a focus on broadening our efficiencies as stewards of public dollars. We repurposed internal talent to leverage and maximize all resources so that our budget request was laser-focused on new investments needed to aggressively undertake the strategic framework. The mayor's recommended a budget for Metro that represented about 60% of our initial request. Therefore, the budget that we'll review today with you has been scaled back accordingly. The revised budget proposal moves us forward, and it moves us forward with resources, but not at the same pace we had envisioned to aggressively target our strategic plan. But looking forward, if we're to realize the vision of providing a great public school education to the students of Nashville and Davidson County, additional resources will be needed. And I plan to focus my comments on the investments that we'll make with the proposed $36 million. But I also think it's important to briefly highlight some of the areas that have gone unaddressed as a result of the funding shortfall. So the district was unable to hire more nurses in our district, psychologists, translators, social workers, and other professionals who'll deliver important support services to students at schools. And this is critical, because before you can get to the academics, you have to get to some of the social-emotional learning, the challenges that exist within our schools. And nurses, for example, play a critical role. I mean, research is very clear that if you have a nurse in buildings, the likelihood of attendance increasing is higher. Because they're there, many of our children don't have access to quality health care, and that school nurse will be someone that can support our children. The district significantly scaled back implementation of its social-emotional learning initiative, which is recognized as a national model. Social-emotional learning has a direct correlation with retention, academic performance, and post-secondary success. The district also limited our implementation of STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, at the middle schools. The initial thought was to include 18 schools and really change teaching and learning in our middle schools on how we're going about teaching, and adding more technology and more professional development and more after-school programs at the middle school level across 18 schools. We want to make sure that whatever we deliver is of quality. So we said if we have to scale back, we'll scale back the number of schools, but not limit the quality, because quality matters. And we want to make sure when we put something out there that, you know, the community feels the difference in the pedagogy at our middle school levels, which is one of the areas that we heard over and over again as we spoke to those 2,400 community members, that our middle schools were an area where we needed to put more focus as a city. The budget proposal is organized into five high-priority areas articulated in the strategic framework. You have fact sheets in front of you, and they're also organized accordingly. The additional revenue will be used to increase employee compensation, cover the cost increases associated with health care benefits, launch the highest priority initiatives cited in the strategic framework, and to cover additional per pupil costs for the anticipated enrollment increases in the district's charter schools. Our five priorities are raising the bar for all students, creating opportunities after school, serving a diverse needs, serving the diverse needs of students, investing in our excellent people, and reinventing middle schools. The first two fact sheets provide a high-level overview of our key initiatives and investments in the student-based budgeting process. We intend to direct $21.4 million for employee compensation, $4.2 million to cover the cost of increase, the cost increases associated with our health and welfare benefits, $7.8 million for programs and services, including the hiring of additional staff, and $18.4 million to cover the cost of increased enrollment growth in charter schools. Now, I'd like to just briefly walk you through each fact sheet, and we'll review them in the order in which they have been provided. So that first fact sheet that you see is raising the bar for all students. We would like to add additional resources to improve literacy instruction, as Mrs. Spearing shared, and expand remediation supports, enhancing assessment tools to enable teachers to better address learning gaps with their students, and expand services for gifted and talented students. You know, one of the things my transition report clearly communicated was the fact that we've got to expect more from all of our children in all of our schools. You know, gone are the days where some kids get high-quality rigorous environments and others don't. If we're really gonna be a great school system, regardless of where a student is within this district, we've got to make sure our teachers are expecting more of them. We also would need to continue to focus on reading, as reading is the foundation for school and life success. If students are not reading proficient by the third grade, then they lag behind their peers academically, and they never catch up. Those deficits actually increase over time if we don't take care of those reading needs early in their process. Just as early literacy is a priority for the city, it must remain one as our foundational investments. The revised budget also will fund a full-time literacy teacher development specialist at each school to model and coach effective literacy instruction and to help our teachers analyze literacy achievement data. We're also gonna continue our investment in reading recovery, which is one of, you know, America's most well-researched reading interventions. And with the 11 additional teachers, we'll have 20 new teachers in our schools, because we had nine that were funded last year, but we weren't able to fill those requests because it was too late in the season. By the time I came on, it was the gap of me coming in, and it being, we didn't want to pull nine teachers right before school started. But we'll have 20 new teachers that will go in next year to help our struggling readers with one-on-one small group instruction. And as Ms. Spearing said, if you have not had an opportunity to see reading recovery in action, we will strongly recommend that you come, visit one of our schools, and see the magic that those teachers do with that one-on-one, highly-intensive reading program. We also want to redesign our curriculum and delivery so that our student efforts, so that our efforts are aligned with the state standards and provide our teachers with training and support they need to be more effective. You know, this is one of the things that we know is a challenge for us. Tennessee has, as you know, some of the highest standards in America right now. I mean, they dramatically increased expectation, but we didn't dramatically change our practices. And so one of the things we know we need to do is make sure we invest in high-quality, targeted training and support for our teachers, because they, we have, we should be teaching dramatically differently from the way things were happening five to 10 years ago, and that's not the case at scale across the district. This week, I will, I think on Thursday, I will have visited every school in this district. So I've seen firsthand what's happening in our schools. Thank you. And what I know, what I know is that there is huge variance, and it's not that teachers aren't working hard, it's not that teachers don't care. We've not provided the training and support that's needed to help elevate the level of instruction that's needed. And we've got to also support our par educators and support our other staff in the buildings to give them the type of training that they need to do the job that needs to happen. We also anticipate investing in an assessment item bank, which will provide teachers with sample test questions that can be used to construct classroom assessments aligned with the standards. You know, our, like I said, our rigor of our assessments have dramatically increased. Our students just completed the T and Ready assessments, and our teachers don't have those types of assessments at their disposal right now. But within this budget, we will give them those item banks and the infrastructure to be able to give those type of ongoing assessments throughout the year, so we can start predicting whether our students are going to reach the target intended. And that, when they take the test at the end of the year, it won't be the first time they come across that type of rigor, that that would have just been a way of practice and standard as they've gone through the year. The budget proposal will also enable us to address the needs for our advanced academics at our schools. Whereas every elementary and middle school will be budgeted at least a part-time position to bolster instructional opportunities for our gifted and talented students, these positions will also coach teachers and help them plan and implement best practices and instructional opportunities. We're also adding an Executive Director of Magnet and Choice Programs to coordinate Magnet and District Choice in the process. You know, one of the things I'm learning as a new parent is, it's very confusing trying to navigate the options that are within this district, because there's no dedicated place to go if I have a question, and there's no one to help me clarify how we get here or there, or what those actual programs are. So, you know, most districts of our size that have been districts of choice have such an office to help do that work and coordinate those supports. So, and that was one of the recommendations from the transition team, so that we felt that that was something that we should move forward with this year. And next, we'll discuss our investment for high schools and beyond. So as we look at the section in your packet that says "Creating Opportunities After High School," the strategic framework prioritizes college and career readiness for students to reach their full potential and to be ready to take on new pursuits after high school graduation. We need to broaden their opportunities while in high school, and we don't want individual family financial constraints to limit their opportunities. So this budget proposes sustained access to free exams for students who are enrolled in our Advanced Placement International Bachelorette and Cambridge programs. The budget proposal also will fund industry certifications and dual-credit exams. In addition, the district will cover the cost of students to take advantage of dual enrollment opportunities. So Nashville has been a model with the secondary high school academies. One of the challenges we see is we don't have enough kids graduating with the actual certifications, because we don't have enough kids even taking the certifications. And we feel a lot of it has to do with the fact that we have lots of kids who just don't have the means to pay for that. So if we are going to invest in having these programs, we should invest in ensuring that the kids can take the exams and be prepared for those exams. So this budget, this budget supports sustained access for free exams for students who are enrolled in Advanced Placement, as I said. Moreover, in support of achieving the successful student characteristics outlined in the strategic framework, we'll also invest in ACT Aspire to help our ninth and 10th-grade students anticipate whether they're on track to score at least a 21 on the ACT exam in 11th grade. So we recognize, you know, much work has to be done to get our kids ready for the ACT, and we should know early, it shouldn't be in 11th grade that a student discovers that they're not ready to do well. We should know that early and be providing supports to do that. And more work in that area of ACT support is definitely needed within the district, and it will be a focus for us. This budget also enhances our need to address our diverse students. Nashville is changing, as you know. I'm sure in every one of your council districts, you see the rapid change. Every year, the district gains an additional 1,000 English-language learners, and just as the city is making an effort to make new Nashvillians feel welcome, we too are committed to celebrating and building upon the diversity of our students. So this budget augmentation will enable the district to add 31 new English-language learner teachers to address the budgets, to address the district's changing demographics. The budget augmentation will also fund pay upgrades to train paraprofessionals who support the instruction of our special education students. We also want to reduce student counselor ratios. We also want to reduce student counselor ratios. In terms of investing in our excellent people, we had to make many difficult choices in this budget, and we prioritize our employees and teachers. Why did we do that? Because we want to attract and retain high-quality talent in our teaching staff, in our central office staff, and in our para-professional and support staff. We're committed to providing our employees with a competitive wage and benefit package so that they can enjoy a good quality of life within our city. This is a shared priority with the Metro Council. You know, we, we thank you for honoring our teachers recently with a special recognition, recognizing the important contribution that they make to the lifeblood of our city through their commitment to giving every Metro Nashville student a great education every day. Additional resources will be used to fund a 3% cost of living increase to all salary schedules, as well as a step increase for eligible employees. Low salaries are a persistent issue.
Here we go, Dr. Joseph. I'm going to ask the honors, if you'd wait till the end to clap, because it does kind of, I mean, we're concentrating on what Dr. Joseph is saying, and it does interfere with us. We appreciate your concern and what you're doing, but wait till the end if you want to clap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, as I said, low salaries are a persistent issue with employee retention and recruitment. Last year, we had more than one, we hired more than 1,000 teachers and had over 1,000 vacancies. And we've had shortages in hiring bus drivers, substitutes, paraeducators, and other key positions. And raising employee pay is a key to retention and morale. And as we launch the strategic framework and make progress, we have to have the right people in place with the right resources and training. And finally, reinventing our middle schools. At the middle school level, we plan to fund a STEAM initiative, and STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, and also expand honors courses back into our middle schools, and hiring a visual arts coordinator at the district to support the implementation of STEAM. We believe that Metro Nashville Public Schools is in position, without question, to be world-class in this area because of our natural resource in this environment with the growing technology sector here, with the amazing arts sector that we have, with some of the strongest universities in the country here. There's no reason without coordination, thought, and support that we can't have strong programs. And why is it critical to focus on middle school? Because those high schools will never thrive unless they have rigorous opportunities at our middle school level, and we're preparing them. Our initial proposal was to implement STEAM in 18 of our schools, and like I said, we will look at our resources to see how we can best do this with quality. We just, because the expenditure was large, we put it out to RFP, and actually, the board will be voting on that RFP tomorrow. So once we finalize that RFP, we can sit down and really be specific on what we can do. But our goal is to make sure that whatever we do is with quality. And the board has been clear that they would like us to find a way to continue to provide high-quality supports with all 18 schools and phase it in over two years versus three years. So we'll sit down and we'll come back and talk specifically about what we will do in the near future. But STEAM initiative at the middle school level gives us the opportunity to retain more students at the middle school level while preparing students for Nashville's growing industries. At the STEAM initiative schools, we also anticipate adding learning technology specialists who will help to more effectively deploy technology to support instruction. We anticipate investing in laptop carts and reducing the student-to-device ratio to a one-to-two ratio at these schools. And we'll also fund the development of maker spaces at these schools, and these are areas that encourage tinkering and inquiry, where students can build and create robotic devices, experiments in technology and materials, and test out their STEAM-related theories. Finally, like I shared, we'll hire a visual arts coordinator to help with the implementation. So in closing, Nashville's an extraordinary place with a growing economy, a hot housing market, and a quality of life that's hard to match in most areas of the country. We're also blessed to have a history of vibrant and, with vibrant and unparalleled music, arts, entertainment, scenes, diversity, and scenic beauty. What else could we possibly need if we have everything? Well, we have almost everything. We need to have a school district that meets its potential. And if properly resourced, Metro schools will become the fastest improving urban school district in the nation. This goal is within our reach if public education is viewed as a bedrock infrastructure investment that underpins the future success of our city. A strong public education is the elevator out of poverty. It is the mojo that fuels innovation, development, and economic growth, and it is the top priority of Nashvillians. You've worked with me this year and participated in the initial heavy lifting that resulted in the district's first in-depth strategic framework. It's time to fast-forward our framework, excuse me, it's time to fast-forward our progress to be intentional about improving the quality of our schools. The framework lays out a well-crafted, data-driven approach, and my team and I are committed to moving us forward. We remain extremely optimistic even when we know that there's a lot of hard work that still lies ahead of us. We look forward to not only reporting to you about our progress, but we look forward to partnering with you in the years ahead to resource our schools to fulfill our ambitious plan. Thank you for your support of our schools and our teachers and our staff, and thank you for your support you've provided me on a personal level in my inaugural year. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Henson, who will walk you through our budget book.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph. And Chairman Kendall, if I may, we had a couple of other school board members come, and I'd like to just.
Yeah, please.
Please point them out. Tyce Hunter and Christian Bugs both came, so wanted to say hello and thank you for being here. What I wanted to do would be just to briefly, if I could, walk you through the budget documents. You have the bound document, which contains all of the documents, and then you also have what we call the fact sheets, which Dr. Joseph has been reviewing. And the first thing that I wanted to do was touch a little bit on the fact sheets, the first page, as it says, budget overview. You can see from the at-a-glance, our total proposed operating budget is just over $879 million, which represents an additional $36 million over the current fiscal year, which represents a 4.3% increase to invest in those five areas of focus that Dr. Joseph just mentioned: raising the bar for all students, creating opportunities after high school, serving the diverse needs of students, investing in excellent people, and reinventing our middle schools. Over half of the budget, approximately 56% of our budget, goes directly to schools through the student-based budgeting process for principals to be able to determine how principals and their school leadership teams want to budget and spend dollars as it relates to their own individual school improvement plans, their goals and objectives that they have in their improvement plans. That 56% or $493 million, there's actually more that goes obviously directly to schools. That doesn't include things like utilities that the district handles on behalf of schools. That doesn't include maintenance at the buildings. It doesn't include transportation. But we do want to point out that over half, 56%, approximately, of our budget goes out directly to schools. And then we also, as Dr. Joseph had mentioned, the main point of emphasis in this budget would be the compensation. We do have a 3% cost of living adjustment, as well as a step pay increase included in our budget request. We have additional dollars, approximately $4.2 million, to cover the increased cost of benefits. We have remaining from that about $7.8 million in expanded programs and services in those five areas of focus. And so if you'll take the document, the budget document that's bound with the clear cover, and if you'll turn to page one, I'll briefly go through this particular page because, as you can see from the top, this is intended to represent a summary of changes to the operating budget from the current fiscal year budget to what's being proposed for next fiscal year. At the top part of the page, you have employee compensation, you have salary step increases and the 3% salary schedule increase for both our certificated employees, as well as our support employees. You have the certificated insurance increase, you have the certificated pension increase, which comes to us from the state. All of our certificated employees are required to be members of the state retirement plan, Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. And then we also have increased costs for our support employee benefits, insurance and pension, which, as you probably know, all of our support employees are treated as metro government employees for benefit purposes, so therefore, all of their benefits and premiums are dictated by the Metro Employee Benefit Board. We also take into consideration estimated vacancy and turnover throughout the year because we know in an organization as large as ours with over 11,000 employees, we are not going to be fully staffed in every position throughout the year. We do have vacancies that occur, and we work to fill those vacancies as quickly as possible. But with as many employees as we have, we are going to have some amount of time between when an employee leaves and the new employee is hired. And so we do take that into consideration. You can see over $9 million we're representing, we're showing as an offset, representing an offset to our employee compensation. In the middle part of the page, we include what we call required additions, inflationary increases, and other required expenditures. A lot of these come to us from metro finance through internal service charges and other types of things that we have to take into consideration. And then in the middle part of the page, our student enrollment growth, and again, it's fairly an anomaly for an urban school district to be growing, but we continue to grow as a school district. But our enrollment growth is occurring in the charter sector. And so we have additional costs as it relates to enrollment growth that we are required by state law to transfer the total state and local revenue per pupil amount to charter schools based upon their enrollment. And so that enrollment growth, as it's occurring in the charter sector, we have additional funding that would be, that will be transferred to our charters. We're also opening a new charter school this year, the new Kip Elementary School. We take that into consideration, but we also take into consideration the fact that overall MNPS-run school enrollment is actually decreasing somewhat. You can see that we're estimating about 1,082 students would be a decrease in our overall MNPS-run schools or district-run schools, even though we know we still have schools in MNPS-run schools in certain parts of the county, such as in the southern part of the county and the southeastern part of the county, that they individually continue to grow in enrollment. The overall MNPS-run school enrollment is actually showing a decrease, and so we reflect that here. That will be fewer dollars that flow through our student-based budgeting formula to our schools if we have fewer students to educate in those schools. So if you look at the middle part of the page, that subtotal, total additions of about $28.2 million, leaving us about $7.8 million to reach that $36 million figure that the mayor has recommended as our funding increase. And Dr. Joseph has already gone over a lot of that with you. You have a lot of detail in those five fact sheets for those five different areas of focus that result in our proposed $879.3 million budget, which represents a 4.3% increase or approximately $36 million increase. I'm not going to go through the remainder of the documents because I want to be sure we have plenty of time for questions, but what I will say is you have a number of documents that are included behind this summary page that just provide additional information and additional detail and specificity to certain accounts. We also have what we call our detailed line item budget, which begins on page nine. It's a 31-page detailed line item budget with standard object codes for each account. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about that. And then at the end of that, at the end of that detailed line item budget, we have, beginning on page, on page 40, we have an alpha sort of account names. So if you're trying to find something within our line item budget, hopefully, if you have an idea of what the account name might be, then you can find the account number in that 31-page line item budget. At the end, we include two other funds. We include our Nutrition Services Fund, which, as you probably know, is a self-supporting enterprise fund. The vast majority of funding coming into that fund would be through federal USDA funds. We continue to be what's called a Community Eligibility Provision District, which means all of our students eat breakfast and lunch at no charge to them. Again, funded mainly, and the majority of that funding through federal USDA dollars. And then over on page 48, we have our estimated federal programs and grants summary. We know that the federal fiscal year runs October 1 to September 30, so we're still dealing with preliminary estimates. We do know what the president has proposed as it relates to the federal budget, and so we're aware of that. But we also know that Congress is going to have to approve any budget that's approved. And so we're keeping an eye on some of the proposed reductions in the federal programs, particularly in Title II funding, which for our school district equates to almost $3 million, which is, as proposed by the president, to be completely eliminated. So we're going to, we're taking a wait-and-see attitude until we know what's going to be actually approved by Congress. So I went quickly through all of those documents, and I apologize, but again, wanted to be sure to leave plenty of time for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I call on anybody, what do Title II funds do? What are they for?
Title II is, the intent is for teacher and principal training and teacher and principal recruiting.
Thank you. Ms. Weiner?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Chris, Dr. Joseph, everybody, thank you for being here. We appreciate it, and we're thrilled to have such vocal supporters in the back. That's great. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, let's talk about the school nurses. Given my background in healthcare, that's something that I see the obvious importance of, and I've been looking for it, and it's probably just my jet lag. Can you share with me how much you need to make that happen?
We had originally looked at increasing the, the number of nurses in our schools potentially over a three-year phase-in, and to get where we wanted to be required almost $3 million in total. And so the initial budget proposal that the Board of Education approved back on April 11th included an additional just under $1 million increase for that three-year phase-in to increase the number of nurses. As you probably know, the vast majority of our nurses, we contract with the Metro Public Health Department for those nurses, and we had been working closely with Dr. Paul over the last several years, trying to improve the number of nurses that we have in our school. Just one point of reference that I'll make, just for your advocacy efforts, in the state's funding formula for education, the basic education program, they only fund one nurse per 3,000 students, and that has been unchanged since the BEP originated in 1992, 25 years ago. What we wanted to do, and I think what everybody wants to do, is to, if possible, have a nurse in every school. The National School Nurses Association recommends one nurse per 750 students. We've got a long way to go to be at that level, but again, over a three-year period with just under $1 million was sort of our plan to try to phase that in over time. But when we came back with our revised number, we didn't include that increase.
So we don't have line item veto. We can't tell you what to do with the money that we give you. However, my question would be, and it's a loaded question, if we were able to find the funding for this particular line item, could we have the verification that you would use the money for that purpose?
Yes.
That was the right answer. Thank you. Okay, so here's my next question, page six. I was looking at the per-student allocation, and I believe you've estimated that to be approximately $9,600, whether it's charter or non-charter. Is that about right?
Correct. That's our estimated state and local revenue per pupil amount for next year, and that's what state law dictates that we transfer to our charters, and that's what we use in that calculation.
Okay. So on page six, I was just looking randomly at the non-traditional schools, and my assumption is these are the total operating expenses for each of those schools?
These would be the operating expenses for the part of the budget that those school principals and school leadership teams have control over. Obviously, this doesn't include things such as utilities, maintenance, and other kinds of district costs that would be in addition.
So is that part of that $4,500 that they get in basic funding, or is that over and above this?
The utilities, maintenance, and transportation is over and above that, that student-based budgeting base, which is $4,425, and then different weights are added on based upon the individual needs of students in those schools.
Okay. So I see a really wide disparity in these schools if you look at the per-student allocation just for these costs alone, and again, knowing that it's actually higher than what I've calculated. For example, middle college is roughly $7,452 per student, and it goes all the way up to transitions, and that is $19,500. transitions, and that is $19,587 per student. Why is there such a wide disparity in the allocations? Most of the others cluster around $10,000, except for Cone and Academy at Old Cockrell, and those are about $14,000 per student.
It's based upon the needs of the students in those schools. For instance, our transitions program is a program for students that have been incarcerated, and as they leave being incarcerated, they come to our transitions program for a period of time for very specialized type of instruction before they transition to their school of zone or wherever they're going to school. And so it's just a very specialized program specifically for that group of students, and so there's a very low ratio of adults to students in that particular program.
So I understand that there are roughly 24 students. Is that pretty consistent over time, or how much does that fluctuate? Is there a trend that we could look at?
What we tried to do, this is the first year we've included these student enrollment numbers for these schools, and the reason that we haven't in the past, because they do fluctuate throughout the year. These 24 students won't be the same 24 from beginning of year to end. Students move in and out of these programs. Similarly, to our alternative learning centers, students move in and out based upon their own situation. And so what we've tried to do here is just use an average number of students throughout the year, realizing that in many cases, these will not be the same students that start the year as those that end the year, or even those that begin the second semester.
And so, back to the transition schools, my last question. Back to the transition program. How much interface do you have with, say, Juvenile Court and some of the work that they're doing to try to get these kids back in good graces and where they need to be in life?
There's a lot of coordination through Dr. Tony Majors and our Student Support Services Office with Juvenile Court and, you know, with all of the other metro agencies that deal with our children. There's a lot of coordination involved.
Okay. Right now, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure who I want to direct this to. I think I'll, the first question, actually, I will direct to Chairperson Shepherd, if I may. You sent us an email, or actually, you forwarded an email to those of who are in your school board district from Mr. North with regards to the amount of money that he felt like that we weren't giving to the schools. If you would, share the relevance, if you don't mind, with the council of what that letter and what that email meant, please.
He brought this to my attention, and I think his main question was the fact that it had, between the budget that we saw on the 11th, that we approved on April the 11th, and then the subsequent budget that we approved in May, it had taken a significant increase. And I think that's where his questions were lying, right, in that why was it different in one month's time?
Okay. So, Mr. Jamison, if I could, I want to specifically ask about, he says, he quotes item 7777 on 29 of 31 reading from his letter, that $8.32 million in line 777 may not be allowed and may violate the Metro Charter. Can you give me a background, or can you help me on that, please? Does it in fact, because I asked Mr. Reblin in the last meeting we had, has that been in our budget every year? This is my 16th budget. I'm pretty sure it has been.
All right. You'd been a straight table.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? It generally has. So this is the line item 7777. I just got his email a minute ago, and then I went back to the office to try to print off, because he links to a blog post, so I'm trying to scroll down to the specific concern. Mr. North mentions that requiring the refund payment, he thinks, may violate the Metro Charter. He doesn't cite the charter section, but he does link to this blog section. So the line item that he's citing, the 777, is in our fixed charges that we assess across the board for property tax refund. And I'm halfway through his blog post. What is concerning to him is that that would include tax increment finance incentives, which have grown over the years, and so a larger portion is coming from schools. Year before last, it was $6 million, and now it's over $8 million. I can't tell you that violates any provision of the charter. I'm not defending the practice, but I would not say that, I would say that it does not violate the charter at first.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Henson, you know, I've sat on this, I've sat on this side, and now I'm over here on this side. In the last decade, I did a little research today and over the weekend, in the last decade, we have actually given greater increase of funding to schools than what the city has actually seen in its increase. In fact, six out of 10 of those years, we've given a greater amount of money. But, and don't, well, you can be offended, whatever, on what I'm about to say. I unfortunately hear the same things now that I heard 16 or 17 years ago when I first got involved with the Parent Advisory Council. We're going to work on middle schools. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. And I still have people in my district that are moving and leaving because of the middle schools. We have not taken that head-on, in my opinion, and, you know, the funding that we're giving and that we're trying to provide, when I hear you guys talk about equity for all children across the board, I hear we're going to talk about 32 schools, or we're going to talk about 18. I don't hear all schools. I don't talk about how we're, I don't hear how you're going to talk about all schools. So if you would, can you share with me how the people that live in my district can wake up tomorrow morning and be confident that when the school year starts next year, that in fact, it is going to be better, and that their students can go to these schools, and it will be a better environment than what it is today? Because I'm sorry, I do not hear that we actually have equity coming across for all students.
I'll take a crack at that one. So, a couple of things I'll say. I can't speak to the past. I can only speak to now. And now, what we have is a strategic framework that clearly lays out to everyone what we're going to do, and that's what you have in front of you, and that strategic framework there. We will have, you will be able to tell your constituents that when they start the school year next year, your school will have clear targets that they're expected to make progress on. You'd be able to tell your folks now that there is a dedicated person in every single school that is an literacy expert that's going to be supporting teachers and supporting students who need reading support. I think you'll be able to tell your constituents that now you'll have somebody in your buildings that focus on the gifted and talented needs of children in all buildings. It won't be that if there are two or three kids in a building, that someone comes in and just works with those two or three kids and leaves the other 800 kids behind, that there is a thoughtful, targeted plan to make sure that there's more rigorous opportunities within your schools. If you're for your middle schools, because I do know, you know, Dupont Hadley, and I know Dupont Hadley is one of the schools with the middle school initiative that was identified, you'd be able to tell them that those children in those schools have new tech, new techbooks in science that are, and those techbooks are rigorous and aligned to the new National Science Foundation standards that are, that are the new next-generation standards in science, and they'll have a one-to-two ratio for technology in those schools and should be, you know, reading higher-level text, utilizing technology more effectively, that they will have, you know, robotics clubs and more focus on math engagement than they've had before. I think you would be able to tell them that if they have a new principal, and in your particular area, I'm aware of, you have one new middle school principal, she'll be going to her second year, and then you have, you know, some others that have been there for a while, but there's now leadership support directly tied to those schools that wasn't there before to work with principals. And you'd also be able to tell them that now you have a community superintendent, someone who will focus on your high school, middle schools, and elementaries, and coordinate supports and resource, and is a one-stop shop for you if you have problems with students from your elementary up through McGavick High School. There is one leader there that works to provide coordination and support for services. So those are just a few of the things that go to all schools that will address the equity question. But more importantly, you can tell them, here's the plan that we can hold the school system accountable to. Here's what they said they were going to do, and we can have meetings to see if they did it or not. But the targets will be clear and set for all schools, so we won't be talking ambiguously. We'll be real clear about, here's where they're started, here's where they said they were going to grow, did they do it or not?
Okay. Well, this is, like I said, about 16th or 17th year that I've been involved with this. When I got involved with the Parent Advisory Council, under Dr. Garcia, he did one of the very similar things of there being a director in each one of the clusters, and I don't remember the exact title. We'll see if it works this time.
I'll tell you the difference between his and now, if you'd like, but it is different.
And what is that, please?
Sure. So the difference, the difference now is we have reorganized all of central office with these supports. So Dr. Garcia did divide the district into different quadrants, but he didn't totally coordinate support. So we, we are pulling, we have a one-to-10 ratio of principal-school supervision now that he did not have. And we also have aligned our counselors and our psychologists and our curriculum folks. We're aligning those individuals to those targeted areas so we can have support teams going into the schools. But with that ratio of supervision now with the established targets, and I don't, I don't see any evidence of the target setting if it was there, but he was here a long time ago, so he may have had it and it's just gone now. But the schools that will have clear targets will have monthly monitoring meetings with the support team there, so as they see areas of need or shortage, there are people that are there to help provide those supports. Because we've restructured in the way we've done, we have lifted a lot of the responsibility that principals had that kept them from being in classrooms, providing feedback to teachers and providing support. You know, they won't have the same responsibility that they had, so they can really focus on the instructional pieces. I mean, my goal was to clear the stuff that keeps principals from being in providing real supports to students. That has not been done. So as what you had is a high accountability and low support. And when you do that, you never get, you know, breakthrough results. But we've been intentional about the repurposing and the realignment to make sure that we can have a high accountability, high support model, one that if you ask any principal in these clusters, will tell you, they feel the difference. And they felt the difference this year without the realignment. With the realignment, there'll be much more support, which allows us to have much more accountability. And in those schools where you see results, it's because there's high accountability, but there's high support going and a coordinated services, but fundamentally different from what had been the case. We were a district that, again, had limited resource, and the gap of supervision and responsibility was much larger than what we currently have. And we've done that through repurposing of what was there.
Okay. And then my, this is really not a question, because we don't have any, we can't dictate any money that you guys spend, but I've asked this question for multiple years, and I've never gotten an answer back. The magnet schools, if the number's still, and if, Mr. Henson, you can get, find the number for me, if you would, or whatever. The magnet schools, if I think we look at that on a cost-per-student basis, is probably one of the greatest investments we make. It's the lowest cost per student that I think that exists out there. I've asked repeatedly, because there's a number of students who live in my district that apply to an MLK or to a Hume-Fogg that don't get in because there's limited seats, and we turn those students away. And a lot of them end up leaving the district because they want their children, you know, in that type of environment. I've asked repeatedly, why don't we expand the magnet schools into the middle school categories and things? It's never happened. And so here's my question. How many students apply for those magnet schools? How many get turned away? And then how many don't end up staying with the district because they're not able to attend the schools, the rigor of the type of schools that those parents are looking for? And I'm certain you don't have the answer right now, but I would love to finally get that answer. And I would also love to find out if we would actually look at doing that in the middle schools and actually taking, and because that's where our greatest walk is happening, it looks like in my district, is from elementary to middle schools. McGavick is rocking and rolling, but those middle schools, there seems to be a major throwback there, and I would like to know, you know, specifically, how many students are we losing? And then what can we do to more effectively keep those students in the district? Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, we can look to get you that, we can look to get you that information. It's one of the reasons, though, we're creating that office that I mentioned of magnet, and in terms of, you know, one of the things that we're going to do, and we're actually starting it in the Hillsborough Cluster this year, is, you know, because when you look at a Hume-Fogg, for example, I mean, they just do AP really well, amongst other things, and MLK. We need to restructure what's happening, particularly in those AP programs, and we're starting that next year in the Hillwood Cluster, to really look at ratcheting up the offerings of APs across the board throughout the school district, between the AP, the IB, and the Cambridge programs in particular. But really, we see a missed opportunity with equity with the AP work across the district. And next year, we'll be piloting a scholars' AP program at Hillwood, which will get to the equity issue that you see between a Hillwood and a Hume-Fogg type of, type of environment. But we're aware of that at the high school level. At the middle school level, I agree, there's work that needs to be done, and that's where we're phasing in the honors work back at that middle school level beginning next year, because we recognize you can't, you don't just walk high school-ready for advanced placement opportunities. That had to start much earlier. So recognizing that, we will, we will target and add those supports in place. And that's why I prefaced with, as we implement the middle school work, we have to focus on quality, because we, we're not, this isn't, this isn't the notion of just putting, changing names and then calling something magnet, but really putting no substance behind it. We have to put substance behind the curriculum and the training and the opportunities and access that children get, so they'll be ready for those, those high schools. But in terms of that data piece, we'll get it to you. But when, when we have this office that's established, we know we'll be tracking that information longitudinally. So when I sit here with you next year, we will have an answer in those specifics in detail if we can't get it now, but we should be able to get some of that data to you, and we'll do that soon.
Mr. Vice Mayor, is it my finger or what? Don't you know all these things? Won't work for me. Oh, I got too many. Rosenberg, before you start, Mr. Rosenberg, I know you have several questions. I would ask that the members maybe limit to two initially, and if we can get back to you, so give everybody a chance, because there's a lot, a lot of lights on this.
Ten.
Yeah, 10, 10 people right now.
Ten questions on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for being here very much, our school board, Dr. Joseph, Mr. Henson. You all are doing a great job with a lot of challenges. I think the challenges come down, first of all, looking at the population that's challenging to educate, high EL, high poverty. You're dealing with a, a culture that's driven in the public where schools are judged based on test scores, which is unfortunate. You know, scores, of course, are indicators of the population they serve. If you put all the top-performing students in a school, it's going to look like the best school in the world. And then, you know, when I've had the opportunity to go on tours of schools that are denigrated, it's really, you know, emotionally disturbing to see how hard those teachers and students are working, and then getting beaten up for no reason at all. And of course, you've got a political environment, most acutely at the state level, that's hostile to public schools and to public school teachers, also at the federal level, and that's not anything new, and among some segments locally. And then beyond that, there's the money issue. Chronically underfunded at the state level means that... or filing an authorizer lawsuit to address some of these fiscal issues?
I think probably the board would have to answer that. I don't know if they prepared to.
Ms. Shepherd?
I'm sorry.
That topic has come up from time to time, Councilman. We, if we were to go down that slippery slope, we would have to do with, you know, with a national council as far as, you know, representation, because it takes somebody that knows that area specifically to be able to make a decision like that. And so we hear you, we know we're underfunded, and we constantly sing that tune, you know, at the state level. And we, several of us are active and take part in the class calls every Friday morning when the legislature is in session, and we do not hesitate to point out to our state legislators that they are short-funding us on a yearly basis. And so we do sing that song often.
Thank you. All right, if I just get one more. So we're going to be sending $111 million to taxpayer-funded private schools that are cleverly marketed as charter schools, and 51% of the increase this year is going in that direction. So we've had a couple independent studies that have talked about the negative fiscal impact on our public schools, the MGT study commissioned by the school board, and then the other one commissioned by former mayor Dean and the Metro Council that talked about it. Can you just talk a minute about the fixed cost issue related to charter schools and public schools? And then how many seats we've got coming online if no other schools are approved and what that'll cost?
There we go. Thank you, Councilman. One thing that we've attempted to do over time is to analyze how we can be more efficient as a district as it relates to some of those fixed costs. The fixed costs are mainly those costs that the district provides on behalf of schools. So for instance, when students leave a school to go to a charter school and that school still exists, there's not a lot of cost savings that are seen by the district because the school still needs a principal, we're still paying utilities on that school, et cetera. So you have very minimal cost offset, really until you get to a point where a school is actually closed, do you see much in terms of offsetting the cost? So you have a lot of the costs associated with the district that, at some point in time, could become variable, but it would take a significant enrollment shift from district-run schools to charter schools to be able to really realize that. Having said that, we continually look at ways where, if we're actually educating fewer students in district-run schools, how can we potentially reduce our costs? We haven't seen a lot of movement there yet because we haven't seen that significant shift in enrollment. We're still basically running the same number of school buses. We're still maintaining the same number of buildings and paying utilities at the same number of buildings. We may have some schools that have fewer students, but we have not closed any schools recently. And so, so far, we've not seen a lot of offset as it relates to the charter enrollment increasing and the district enrollment decreasing. And there are some costs that we term fixed that at some point could become variable on down the line if, in fact, we were to see that significant enrollment shift. As far as the number of charter students into the future, we keep up with that based upon what each individual charter's application has proposed. Most charters will start with one or two grades and then add another grade per year until they reach the end of their grade span. And so we have all of that information that we take into consideration in our long-term planning. And as you said, even if the Board of Education didn't approve another charter school, we would still have additional charter enrollment on into the next four to five years, just based on what's already been approved.
So do you know how many seats and what the cost is of that's coming online in the future if nothing else is approved?
I don't have that with me, but we do have that analysis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Dow.
Thank you. I just want to thank you both for being here today and putting together information. I thought it was very informative. I really liked the handout that you gave us with the strategy, the plan, and monitoring you on the progress. So I look forward to doing that. I have two questions, and Chris, you probably know, I ask this every year, and I'm going to ask it again, and you have two more years, I guess this year and one more, to hear me ask about this. But I am really concerned about, I want to ask about two things. One, the capital planning budget as it pertains to growth. Nashville is growing tremendously, and our Antioch Southeast Cluster, Cambridge Cluster, is growing, I mean, by the bounds. You know, I talk about this all the time in planning, how many new housing units we're getting. And despite what our planning departments say, I notice that a lot of children are catching the bus outside of these apartment complexes. And we always engage in a debate when it comes to development about, you know, when they build a new school, they say, it's only 20 more kids, yet I see two buses stopping by the apartment complex. So I want to know, what is your strategy for planning for the growth in the school system? As you know, when we had the audit a few years ago, it showed that our Antioch-Cainbridge Cluster schools were already at capacity. I know we're building a new elementary school, and they're all feeding into two middle schools that I know are not going to be able to accommodate all of those students. And so I hear this from the businesses coming in, and I hear from the people looking to move to the area. How are we going to address overcrowding issues in the school? And what is our strategic plan? Do we have it in the budget? And also, when it comes to looking for land, land is really getting scarce in our area. And while there are some large parcels of land available now at a reasonable price, I think we should kind of start, you know, engaging in that conversation and looking at. So I want to, that's my first question. And then the second question is about transportation. One of the biggest issues we have out in our southeast area is about the metro school buses parking inside our communities. Many of our HOAs prohibit them. They're parking on businesses' property. They don't want the buses parked on their property. And I want to know if you can address what's going on with the school bus situation and the transportation issues, and what can I do today to help you address those issues so that we're not dealing with those problems in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. As you said, we do have a new elementary school opening, Eagleview Elementary, that will be opening in August of 2018 to help alleviate overcrowding at Cane Ridge Elementary and potentially AZ Kelly Elementary. We have plans in our six-year capital improvement budget to, as you say, purchase additional land. We're, as you are, always looking for potential land in that area because we know it's going to continue to grow. We take into consideration the feeder effects from an elementary to our middle schools in our six-year capital improvement budget. And so our student assignment office, they monitor live births, they monitor, they work very closely with metro planning to determine where we might need either classroom additions or to actually build new schools. In our initial capital improvement budget request for next year, we had included an addition at Thomas Edison Elementary, which is overcrowded, as well as an addition at J.E. Moss Elementary, which is overcrowded. With what has been recommended in the capital spending plan, neither of those projects were included. And so we will continue to do the best that we can based upon the capital funding that's allocated through the capital spending plan for those types of projects. But what we've said all along is, we want to be sure that students have appropriate classrooms as our top priority, which means we want to get students out of portables into regular classrooms. And so that has been classroom additions and new schools to deal with student enrollment growth. That has been our top priority, even though we also have a lot of other needs as it relates to school renovation needs. We have a lot of old school buildings that need rehabilitation, but we always look as our top priority, making sure we have appropriate classrooms for our students as it relates to schools that are overcrowded. And so we'll continue that, we'll continue that fight with you, and we appreciate, you know, all the assistance that you've provided to us. But our six-year capital improvement budget would serve as a guide to, for you to and anyone else, to look and see what the plans would be on into, not just next year, but years two, three, four, et cetera, to attempt to continue to deal with the student enrollment increases that we're seeing in that southeastern part of the county. As it relates to school buses, we are really in need of land to be able to park school buses. It would be optimal if we had land in at least two, but if not two, maybe four areas of the county, the four quadrants, so that we can centrally park school buses in a secure area. Because as you say, right now, school buses are parked, some are parked at schools, but and some are parked at homes, some are parked at our transportation lot, which doesn't, is not able to accommodate that many. And so we're constantly looking for ways that we can do that better. If there's a school bus parked on property that has not provided permission for that, please let us know that, because our policy is that we only park on property that, where we've received permission. And so if that's not the case, we, I want to be sure that we know about it, or if it's in violation of a homeowners association covenant or rules, we want to know that, too. But it's a matter of being able to have an adequate space, and we're very appreciative to MTA because they have opened up some of their space down on Myatt Drive for us to park some of our buses. But with the number that we have and with the size, the geographic size of Davidson County, we need at least two to four areas where we can centrally park buses.
Well, I was just thinking, with all the schools that we have in our area, weren't they able to park their buses overnight on the school property? Is that an issue? Just park them at, you know, the AZ Kelly and the Thurgood Marshall and Kennedy and Cambridge High School and Antioch High School, you know, park them on those lots.
We have done that in the past, and we'll continue to look at doing that. I know we've had issues with vandalism on the buses when they're parked somewhere that there's not, where there's not any activity. But that's something that we've looked at, and I don't know all the details as far as why or why not at certain schools, but I do know that some schools do serve as areas where drivers park their buses.
Okay. That's one of the things I definitely would like to, you know, get some feedback or some type of strategy around, because I get more calls about buses parked at businesses on their parking lot in their neighborhoods and so forth. And I see no reason why we can't have some type of policy issue that they park those vehicles at the school, since they are within our communities already and they have parking lots that sit empty overnight. I would think it's a simple policy issue that we return our buses over to the schools in the evening. And I appreciate your comments on the plan as far as schools. I know that we're constantly, as council members, being approached about development. And our area, I'm constantly, I think I have about six different requests sitting out there for multifamily housing. All of them are in grossly overcrowded school districts. Some of them are already entitled to build without, you know, our school trigger thing we have in the planning department where they have to allocate land and so forth. And I'm really concerned, because what I'm seeing is a lot of people leave the area because of the overcrowding issue. And just to give you an example, something to consider, because I'm definitely supportive of our schools, is that in a couple of my schools, they went all the way about nine weeks and didn't have access to books or seating in the classroom because of the overcrow and they didn't even have a place to sit, nor did they have material. And I'm also concerned about, because of the population and not having the staff in place, many of the students went several months into the school year with a sub-teacher. And so that is another concern of mine. The other question I was going to ask you, and this may be from operations as far as staffing, is have you considered creating a pool with some of the retired teachers to come back and teach when you don't have the teachers hired for the beginning of the year, since we're dealing with a lot of the turnover? But maybe have some of those teachers that are skilled in those subject areas to come in and teach those classes, so the students are learning something during the time where they don't have a teacher assigned to the class?
We do. We recruit retired teachers. Of course, if they're drawing retirement, they're limited on the number of days that they can work after they retire, but that is a part of our strategy to, for substitutes, as well as to fill in when there's an interim situation where you have a teacher that's going to be out on some type of leave for over, for a certain amount of time, that requires a certificated teacher to be in that classroom, even though the teacher's planning to come back later on in the year, but that is a part of our strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got seven or eight people in the queue, so want to try to wind up about 6:30 and just kind of keep that in your mind. Don't want to compete with the public hearings that we've been having. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Notice the warning right before I went. Thank you. Now we've all got the hockey game, go see. Appreciate it. I'll keep it brief. Thank you. Just wanted to first say thanks for everybody being here and then the tremendous vision you laid out, Dr. Joseph. Haven't got to hear you speak enough, and as I mentioned, at State of Metro, and really, really impressed, actually, so far, just with the rigor you're expecting, the pushing you guys are doing, just sensing that sort of like CEO-level kind of planning and everything you guys are working on from the top, and that's all you guys at the top level. So a couple of questions. First, one to ask about pre-K. Hadn't heard a lot about pre-K. We've been talking about it a lot the last couple of years and adding to pre-K. I'm guessing we're just kind of, you know, as far as funding, keeping everything steady? Are we adding more students in pre-K?
At this point, we're basically keeping it steady. We are in the midst of a federal preschool expansion grant that we've been using now. This is our second year. We have two more years on that grant, which is about $8 million a year. And so what we're planning at this point is looking towards sustainability when that grant funding runs out after two more years. And so at this point, we're not looking to expand. We're looking mainly to planning for the future more long-term as far as sustaining what we currently are funding through the grant, through the federal grant, once those dollars run out.
Okay. Just making sure we hold on to, yeah, what we have at least. Appreciate all the additions of literacy. I know school member Spearing talked about that. It looked like we're adding 11 literacy coaches, and then the 24, I didn't quite understand what the difference, the literacy teacher dev services, is that teaching the teachers' literacy, or is that a different resource other than the literacy coaches, the 11 positions? What was the difference with the 24 literacy teacher development services positions?
Yeah, so the LTDS positions, the Literacy Teacher Development Specialist positions, are working directly with teachers to build their capacity within their classes, and they'll also provide direct support to some students who are in need. The other, what are you talking about, the reading recovery teachers are?
Those are the 11, right?
Yeah, those are very specialized teachers that are working with our neediest students who need to get caught up by the end of first grade.
Okay, so we've got that, and then we've got more resources for the teachers to be literacy. Awesome. Well, that's all great. I did want to say also, I know you guys had to make a lot of tough choices this year. I felt really bad for the mayor during their, you know, budget process, like everybody went in and asked for a lot more, you know? That's just kind of how it went this year, and so there was only obviously so many dollars to go around. Wanted to plant one more seed. Talked to Hank about this a lot. You know, I'm on the Gender Equity Council and have worked a lot on the paid family leave issue, and we've secured that for general government this year. Didn't really want to bring it up too much. I know because you guys were already, you know, only getting half or 60% of what you asked for, whatever. So just kind of planting the seeds for next year. Would love to see paid family leave on the MNPS side and just continue to grow that. And I know we only have so many dollars, and you've done great to give raises and that sort of thing, so, you know, have everything, but I just wanted to keep pushing for that, and hopefully we can get paid family leave for both general and MNPS employees.
Thank you. Mr. Hager?
I was wondering when I'd get there. Thank you, Dr. Joseph, for being here. Glad you're in O'Hicker. Hope you're enjoying it over there, and your family is, too. Appreciate all the board members being here today. Just a couple of quick questions. We're talking about the teacher raises. I know that was a big thing. How do we compare with the other cities like Shelby County and Knoxville? Were you on par with what they're paying their teachers at the present time?
We are behind Memphis and Shelby County and have been for a number
Just a couple of quick questions. We're talking about the teacher raises. I know that was a big thing. How do we compare with the other cities like Shelby County and Knoxville? We on par with what they're paying their teachers at the present time?
We are behind Memphis and Shelby County and have been for a number of years and fairly, you know, somewhat significantly. We fare more competitively, maybe with Knox County, Knoxville and with Hamilton County, Chattanooga, but we, we recruit nationally. And so last year, we performed some, what we called peer district analysis, where we looked at places like Austin and Denver and Charlotte and some of our peer districts to see what we might could do as it relates to teacher salary and where we, where we stood at the time. And during this past year's budget, we did include $10.25 million into the teacher salary schedule to shore up some of the areas where we didn't fare very well, particularly the mid-career teachers, the five to 15 years. And so we put quite a bit of funding on, into the, the salary schedule this past year. Wasn't, wasn't enough to get us where we needed to be. And so even within the state of Tennessee, you can find districts, particularly some of the higher income city school systems like Bristol and Franklin and Kingsport and some of the others, they pay more than, than we do, even within Tennessee. And so we have a ways to go to, to be where we should be, which, where we should be, we should be the, the top paying, the top paying school district in Tennessee.
And, and that's what I was getting at because of the attrition, you know, the attrition rate, is it higher now than it was and say the last five years or about the same?
I don't have the exact numbers. I, I think it's probably pretty comparable, but it's actually higher than we want it to be, the attrition rate is. And that, that's been a part of what we've looked at, not just recruiting the best, but being able to retain the best. And part of that, of course, is going to relate to, to salary. And, and as we've said, Nashville is getting more and more expensive to live, you know, Davidson County every, every day. And so we, we want to be able to hire teachers and for them to be able to, to live here.
Right. And I guess I wanted to ask about the state. I know they've, they've had another $100 million. Is that correct? Do you know how much we're going to get of that for teacher raises?
What the state has done for the last few years is they've increased state funding and it's not specific as it relates to how much school districts must provide as far as a, a raise. What they will check though is to be sure that school districts are spending that new money on either salary or benefits or, and, you know, compensation. And so with this proposal, we will have more than spent what the, what we're receiving from the state for that particular purpose, but they, they are not as prescriptive as they once were as it relates to what percentage raise might, might come through the state budget.
And I'll say this, I think, I'm a graduate of McGavick High School, long, long time ago, but I've seen it slowly, slowly progressed to one of the best schools I've ever seen. And I think, you know, the middle schools have done very well also. I've seen them progress in my area and doing a lot better job. Is there any decision? I've heard rumors that you, we may go to a fifth grade level in the elementary schools now. Is there any rumor or discussion concerning that and why?
Yeah, so we have proposed that MNPS Next is what we're calling it, which is a project that we thank Councilman Cooper and Councilman Kendall for being on this committee where we have, and we have some board member representation with Ms. Pierce and Mrs. Froge and, and Dr. Gentry, Sharon Gentry are on it, with, with a number of stakeholders in the community. But yes, we are looking at, is there a way to move fifth grade back to the elementary school? And then what are the implications for capacity at our middle school level? So we're bringing a, a broad stakeholder committee together, looking at that, looking at our facilities and looking at efficiencies. Because again, as Mr. Henson identified, you know, we have a number of schools that, you know, have 300 or fewer students. I think there are about 23 schools that do that. And, you know, it's, it's not efficient running those, those buildings. So as we look at moving the fifth grade down, we'll also look at our capacity options and then come out to the public and have public conversations about, you know, what can be done. But, but we've heard from many parents that bringing fifth grade back to the elementary is something that would be looked upon favorably in the community. So we're, we're going to take this time between now and about September to explore, can it be done and what that would look like? And then go out to the community with some proposals to have discussions about it.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph. Thank all of you for being here.
And coupled with that, Dr. Joseph, and the issue of maturity of a child at that age, have some impact on it as well. Ms. Virtue?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Joseph, school board members, Mr. Henson. I'm not going to belabor the point about the school buses, but we do know we have an issue there. So hopefully going into the summer, we will have that addressed. Because if not, my promise will be each and every email and phone call that I receive regarding the matter will be directed to you accordingly and News Channel 5, Myatt. Can we speak to, can someone speak to, how do we prioritize as it relates to the, the capital spending for schools? More importantly, and I don't want to speak for Karen School, but for JE Moss, which is in my district and for my constituents that's watching, we have Apollo Middle Prep and, and JE Moss Elementary School. 13 portables there the last time I counted. Had an accident over there where the crossing guard was hit. Multiple complaints about the possibility of, of children being hit over there on, on that street. JE Moss has been a school, and I don't want to say neglect it because I, I don't want to take away from the hard work that that administration does over there and the hard work that the parents do to make sure that those kids are, are basically successful. At the end of the day, I know we can, we can sit here and talk about making hard decisions and so forth, but these are the children and that school is beyond needed repairs. Not just JE Moss, I throw Apollo Middle Prep in there too and I saw we were cutting some of the maintenance positions. It's disheartening when I get an email and get a phone call about the water isn't working or the AC isn't working or the building smells like mold or it has this leak or, or it has, or it has that leak. I would like, and I, I guess your decision, your decision has been made, but I would really like for full consideration for, for JE Moss, that school, that the, the kids there, the, the parents there, they've been crying for years, long before you, Dr. Joseph. So I'm, I'm not lashing out at you. You kind of, you inherited this. But for many years, that school has been doing the best that they can with little to no resources that they've been receiving from this district. They haven't been receiving the support from, from some of the other schools in this district. And I'm not going to say it's because of the demographic that they're serving, but I want you to note that something needs to be done, this budget for that school. Thank you.
And I'll briefly comment on that. We, Council Lady, we have included a renovation and classroom addition at JE Moss in our year one capital improvement budget request. And when the capital spending plan came out, JE Moss was not included in what was recommended. And so it, it is one of our top priorities, but it, it was not included in the proposed capital spending plan.
Just for the viewing audience and the families, can you explain how other schools that's not at capacity, that certain areas that don't need new schools, where it isn't as dire as JE Moss, how the schools receive more priority for them as compared to JE Moss? They, it's, it's the public that needs to understand why, why Bellevue gets a new school, why Hillwood and so forth, when this school, when they've been advocating long before I got into office, long before Dr. Joseph got here. And I'll just tell you what they say, it's, it's because they say, it's who we are out there, the city doesn't care. So I need you to, to address that for the viewing public because they are watching. Thank you.
Sure. Several years ago, I guess five or six years ago, we did do a lot of renovation work at Apollo. We have a process where we, when we put together our capital improvement budget request and it goes through our board's capital needs committee, where we have basically two things that dictate the priority. One would be a facility condition score and we use MGT of America's software, basis software, that evaluates all the different components of each building and assigns a condition score to each building. So the lower the condition score, the higher on the priority list that particular facility would go. The second piece and the one that's prioritized more is as it relates to building utilization. So if a building is at utilization over 100%, that means that it's overcrowded. And so depending upon how overcrowded, that could also elevate that particular school to a, a higher priority in our six-year capital improvement budget. We have a lot of, as I said earlier, a lot of old school buildings. The average age of our school buildings is around 43 years. And so they require a lot of work, a lot of deferred maintenance, et cetera. We do the best we can with the capital funding that we have allocated, but there is a process that's a fairly objective process to determine what the priorities would be as it relates to either low condition score or, or high utilization, which indicates overcrowding, where we have our capital needs committee of our board meets during the fall before the board approves a six-year capital improvement budget in January. So in a nutshell, that's the process.
Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Joseph, the school board and your supporting cast. I'm going to be quick. I do want to go back with the transportation and I like what you said about the accountability and, and support. Do you have training? I didn't see anything here. Is that in the contractor services, training for your drivers and assessments of them on a yearly and annual basis to make sure that they are abiding by safety precautions and rules and regulations?
As, as you know, we do have an in-house transportation program. All of our drivers are evaluated and assessed periodically. And so that's, that's a part of what we do on an annual basis with all of our drivers. They, we have driver supervisors who, who monitor the drivers. We have GPS on each bus to be able to monitor things such as speed and making sure that, that buses are stopping at, at the appropriate stop location and, and other things. So we have, we have at least one, if not two, cameras on every school bus. So we put a lot of time and effort in training and as, and also evaluating and assessing our drivers, but these are our drivers. They're not, they're not contracted. We do contract for some drivers, for some of our substitutes, and that's mainly so that we can hopefully get some of our retired bus drivers to come back and sub because they can only work a certain amount of time if they work directly for us, but they can work full-time if they work under, in a contracted situation. And so we've received, we've seen some retired drivers come back to substitute. We've seen some retired metro police officers, metro firemen wanting to come back and, and they've, even though they've retired from metro government, they're willing to, to help us out with substitute drivers.
Thank you. The other thing, the other question I had is, is in relationship, I'm, I'm so excited about the reading and the literacy that you're doing. And Ms. Baring talked about the summer, how some of the reading goes down during the summer. I'd like to know what relationship you have with the parks and if there is any way that you can put reading at the community centers during the summer and take reading to the kids as opposed to, you know, it all being in school?
So we're actually working with the mayor's office, the Nashville Public Education Foundation and the libraries now to look at a, a literacy coalition outside of school. And, and that, we've not, we, we're actually, we've had a couple of meetings and we're going to be working this summer. We haven't talked about the parks, but there, there is a great opportunity there, which, which I see. And, and I think that's something we should take into consideration.
Okay. We're going to try to go about 10 more minutes. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair.
Mina, I'm sorry. I forgot we had two.
Thank you. I will be quick. I thank you so much for being in here and I thank you so much and a great budget. And I'm particularly happy to see rates for the teachers and I think they really deserve it and I thank you for putting in it. And my, I have two questions. One is, I think oftentimes it says the student discipline, especially suspension rate and, you know, how to discipline and so forth. And I'm seeing some counselor position was included. So you, are you expanding the restrictive practice so you don't have to punish and suspend student unnecessarily?
No. In the budget, we have additional counselors to reduce the ratios, but the, in the current budget, we're not expanding the restorative practices. That was in the, that was in our original budget request. But this one, and then this budget, we've, we've got a, we recognize we, we have to do more with restorative practices across the system. I think we, there are challenges that we have to correct and, and we've been working with Mr. Majors, Dr. Majors to, to figure out how to best address that.
Okay. Yeah. I heard a great thing about the restrictive practice, so if we can expand that, that would be great for the school system and more so for the children. And my second question is related to capital improvement budget. I think in April, when school board approved the budget was 288 million for the capital spending we need budget. And this year's mayor's recommended capital spending budget for the school is, I believe, 88 million. And so I'm hearing from, you know, fellow council ladies, especially South and Southeast, that school has really high capacity with, you know, over 122% and 12, 13, you know, portables and so forth, while, you know, Bellevue in my district, especially currently Hillwood High School is 70% of capacity. And so current year's school capital improvement budget is 88 million compared to last year's 150 million. So seeing the trend, next year's budget probably around the same thing. So if we purchase the land for those Bellevue site, you know, the other school or construction of the site will either prolong or pay attention to such as Council Lady Virtus District, JE Moss. Attention to those school will be kind of push, you know, further, further lower in the priority. So is there anything to kind of look at it? Because those student, you know, especially over capacity, those school, you know, deserve a more priority. And in my district, as well as Westmead Elementary School, it has eight, nine portables. It has been on the capital spending need budget, but never be able to come up to the, you know, priority. So now if you are doing district-wide facility evaluation, I would like you to take a look at it, fair evaluation for district-wide and maybe revisit how to score the priority. So those people, you know, student, especially overcrowded school, does not have to suffer and wait no longer. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, Chairman. Trying to pull up a, an email I got from a constituent. So I have, this, this is a Sylvan Park parent who said that she wanted to know information about, that they're either not receiving funding to accommodate our requests or have been denied funding for currently held positions that will be reduced or eliminated. So are we thinking that those are programs that are maybe discretionary or are there programs that are being cut from schools now that, that are just going elsewhere?
Without knowing the specifics, I don't know the specifics, specifics of each school's budget, but I'm assuming that's through the student-based budgeting process. And we added additional funding into the student-based budgeting pool so that each school's per pupil amount that they receive actually increased. And so there have been some decisions made at the school level as it relates to different program offerings. And it's also, can also be related to the fact that we are requiring every elementary school to have that literacy resource teacher, which, because literacy is such a strong focus for the district, but without knowing the specifics of, of Sylvan Park's budget, I just am not going to be able to answer.
And so that kind of leads me to my next question. And so that kind of leads me to my next question is that we've got some of the schools in this packet, which I really appreciate, like I really like the way this is laid out and being able to see so much information. I think that maybe we should require other departments to do this, too. So we've got some special schools in here, but we don't have all the schools. Is it possible to get a breakdown of all the schools? I mean, I realize that it's maybe labor-intensive and just a lot of more paper. I just found it interesting to see the differences.
No, we'll be glad to. We provided that to the mayor's office. That was a request in our hearing with the mayor. And we can provide the per pupil amount as well as the total allocation for each school. And we also have in our budget book, which is on our website, has the budgets for each of our schools for the current year that we're in. And we will be posting the budgets for next year once they're all finalized as well. So if you wanted to...
I could find them, I could find them there, too, right?
Yes, you can.
Those are your nice way of saying I could find it online, right?
No, we'll be happy to provide it for you.
Thank you. So, and I may be just confused on this. These are two kind of basic questions, I think, on budget that I just don't know yet. On the summary of changes, that is on the first page that you talked about, the vacancy and turnover, above that is the FICA savings. Is that because of vacancies and turnovers, too?
Actually, that's related to most of our, what we do is we budget for the full salary and benefit cost of each position. Most of our employees have their insurance premiums, for instance, deducted pre-tax. So there's a savings to both the employee and the employer in that case. We also have employees that participate in a Section 125 plan where certain expenses are pre-taxed. And so there's a savings for the employee, but also a savings for the employer. And so that's where we're reflecting that on this line item because we're including the full cost of the positions, both salary and benefits above that.
Okay. And I did see in here that there's a $100 supplement pay for teachers. Is that, I didn't catch what happened at the end of the state legislation. Is that, is that $100, are like Metro money going to the teachers? Or is that the state money that flows through?
Can you show me where, I think I know what you're talking about, but I want to be sure I speak to it.
I didn't mark the page. That's something I might be able, I could email you because I didn't, I'll have to find it.
It may be, it may be under what's called classroom prep pay.
Right.
Where any teacher that comes in and works to prepare their room for the school year prior to their actual contract start date, when that's documented, then the district pays them $100 to come in and do that. And so that's, it's not necessarily related to what was occurring in the state legislature this year. It's something that's been sort of a longstanding tradition here in Metro for us to compensate teachers that are willing to come in during the summer, work in their room, get their room set up before the first day that they're actually required to be in the school.
But do we give, does Metro give teachers any supply money for their classrooms?
We do. We give teachers $200 each for instructional materials and supplies. And then each school receives $100 per teacher that's pooled together. And a committee of teachers determines how that pooled money is spent.
Great, thank you.
All right, I got one more person in the queue. Ms. Johnson, Karen Johnson.
Look at you, put me last.
You showed up last. I'm sorry.
You're right about that. You are. Thank you, Chair. We serve as colleagues, so we understand each other well.
Sure we do.
Dr. Joseph, thank you so much for your leadership. Every document that you have given to us this evening has been spot-on. It is excellent, is very easy to understand. It's, I've not seen the budget pulled out the way that it is. Chris, thank you for your incredible amount of work, too. Everybody, because Chair, all board members, everyone. I think this has just been an outstanding presentation of the budget. It's clear, concise, and we appreciate that because it makes our jobs easier. My question is going to the buses. And I'm not gonna try to harp on it, but I want to ask if you can work proactively with the education committee and budget committee on the site locations that you're currently looking at? Because we need to move in the direction where safety is of utmost importance. In the past, as you said, when the buses were at the schools, that created a lot of issues in terms of safety and vandalism. And so we don't want to return to the problems that we tried to get away from when we put the buses out at the fairgrounds. We want our bus drivers to be able to know that their buses won't be broken into and that they can be able to keep their routes on a timely basis because we are ensuring they have a safe area to park their buses that has adequate security. So that's very important for our bus drivers as well as our children and the entire community. So if you can work with us at the council with both the education committee and budget committee on those sites, that would be appreciated. Also, I wanted to ask about the custodians. There have been a considerable amount of complaints that have increased even since the last budget. We talked about this. We don't get a report from, what is it, GCA? We don't get a report from them. Is there a reason we don't get a report here at the council?
I'm assuming the reason is because the contract is with MNPS. But we can provide, we meet with them on a quarterly basis, and we actually just met today. It's called a joint review committee where we go over the results of the principal report card grades as well as GCA's own internal grading, as well as our grading that our maintenance department does, and talk through the results, talk through planning. For instance, today's meeting concentrated a lot on the summer cleaning that will occur once school gets out after this week. And making sure that we've got a really good plan for the summer cleaning and for the communication with the principals regarding what's going to occur in their buildings. But we can share those, we can share those same joint review committee reports that we receive and discuss with GCA with the council if you'd like.
Okay, because there is no accountability there. And council members have serious concerns about the cleanliness and issues relative to their services. In this budget, which page is it where the line item is that we're paying them? Because I want to explore pulling them back in-house at some point. Have you all been exploring that?
We have not.
Which one is it?
The other thing is on the land for the middle school. I do want to assure citizens in Southeast Davidson County that your council members have been in communications with our school board members, the Honorable Tyce Hunter and the Honorable Will Pinkston. They both have been excellent in communicating what is going on in regards to those search, those properties or site locations. I know that there has been exploration of property along Stewart's Ferry and some other areas, but I just want to thank and commend them for keeping us as council members informed in the advancements of moving towards purchasing property for a middle school. Did Lakeview Elementary get off the list when you made the changes to the capital? Renovations?
Yes, when we, when we did some rezoning, Lakeview had a much smaller student enrollment so that it was no longer overcrowded. But there are still some facility condition issues at Lakeview that need to be addressed through a future renovation.
Thank you. Just put it back on there when you can. And on the rezoning plan, I got two final things. The rezoning plan, Councilman Kendall and I understand that there are going to be some funds that will go away that were previously allocated to the rezoning plan. We want to make sure that that rezoning plan and the intent that we wanted to accomplish in terms of outcomes, that those are sustained. And so do you have a plan in making sure that funding is sustained some type of way?
That is outlined on page, let me turn to it.
Chris, I think what she's talking about, those Pearl Cone area funds.
Yep.
But I think they're gonna go away next year, is that correct?
I was looking at page 13.
It's actually page seven. Page seven is a separate document that outlines the additional resources that go to these nine schools as recommended through the student assignment plan. It has a separate account, account number 2710, where additional funding goes to these six elementaries, the two middle schools, and then Pearl Cone High School totaling a little over $6 million. We have not discussed reducing this. We've not discussed that this would go away.
Okay.
I know that we have an agreement with the Office of Civil Rights as it relates to a three-year commitment for this to continue since it started back in 2009. But we've not had any discussions about it going away or it being reduced.
Okay. And the final thing is the reader recovery. Thank you. I think that is an excellent model. I really appreciate the work that Ms. Jill Spearing has done over the years, board member, the Honorable Jill Spearing has done over the years. Thank you. I like the emphasis in this budget. And also on the, the new, is it new, the 24 positions for the literacy teacher development specialists, are those new? I didn't see that last time.
They are.
Okay.
They're, it's a position that some schools were able to accommodate within their student-based budgeting allocation. But then there were some schools, particularly some of our smaller schools, where we needed to supplement and subsidize additional funding for those schools to allow them to have that position. So there's 24 new positions. The remainder of the schools were able to make it work within their budget.
Thank you. And the Honorable Amy Froge, I want to also thank my Councilman Dave Rosenberg and let them know that we in Southeast Nashville support the building of the new high school because we were in that same situation before I became a board member with Cambridge High School. And it is incredibly difficult to get a high school built. And so those children deserve just as much in terms of facilities and accommodations to increase their student participation, I mean, parent participation and support for their school. And so the building of Bellevue High School is definitely something that we support. And again, we thank you for your leadership. This is the best that I have seen. And I have seen many reports from different directors before you, Dr. Joseph, and this is the best. So thank you to all of our teachers, all of our support staff, our bus drivers, SEIU, everybody with the school system. You're doing incredible job with our children and we thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, that was the last person we had in the queue. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Prambo, you're not lit up here. Yes, you are. Yes, you are. My eyesight is.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Joseph, and thank you, the board, and thank everyone, Ms. Jill and Chris for being here. I want to thank, that was a very explicit answer on the annual baseline measures and how you're going to keep them accountable. I like that. Very quickly, one question. ASD, Neely's Been College Prep is going to be totally ASD this year, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. So with that, there'll be no Metro, I mean, Metro involvement. Will there be any cost involved in maintaining that school since ASD will be operating that school?
The only thing that we do is, since the ASD receives the full state and local revenue per pupil amount, they receive it directly from the Tennessee Department of Education. With the ASD schools, Achievement School District schools, the funding doesn't flow through the district. So they receive that off the top of our state funding, directly from the State Department of Education. And that includes normal maintenance. We would still be required, if there were any capital improvements that were needed to the building, we would still be required to do that, just as we would have at Brick Church where we have the other Achievement School District school. But we've not run into any major issues as it relates to facilities. Once the Achievement School District has all the grades in the building or they're occupying the entire building, they basically are responsible for the upkeep of the building.
So we do have costs, yet they're responsible for the upkeep?
We do have potential capital costs. If there's something that's fairly large that needs to be taken care of through capital funding, then with the way that the state law is written, then we would be responsible for that. But they're responsible for just regular, routine, normal maintenance.
Right. And also, is that the same with charter? Or is that, I mean, charter is different since not all the, I mean, it's private, but yet it's, I mean, we're funding it. But when it comes to the building, is that the same thing there?
It's very similar to those charters that lease facilities from us. It's a very similar arrangement where we would be responsible for any needed capital items. And the charter, since they're receiving the entire operating budget, which includes all of our maintenance funding, they would be responsible for any normal maintenance.
Great deal if you can get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prambo. Okay, I'm going to ask one quick question and then make one brief comment, then I'm gonna get our fine vice, Honorable Vice Mayor to close us out. Dr. Joseph, well, Chris, on this social and emotional learning, what did y'all, I see you only increased that by $20,000 from last year. And I think that's been a big concern, not just of yours, but of teachers, principals, and others about classroom decorum and all that. Talk a little bit about that. What did you have to, what did you have in the original budget that you reduced this by?
In the original, I'm not sure what the number was, but in the original budget, we had investments in expanding the restorative practices by having some psychos, some social workers and then a central, a central person responsible for helping us with the implementation of the restorative practices. Again, it's an area, it's an area of need for us within the district to really continue to focus on that. But I can get you the specific number of what that was. But there were counselors, social workers, psychologists that were included in looking at providing additional supports for the effective implementation of the restorative practices.
And that impacts decorum in the classroom, bullying, and all kinds of things, does it not?
All right. Yes.
Okay, that was my question. My comment, I want to thank, thank you for being here, all of you, board members. You do a great job. One of the things I want to say to Joseph, I served with, on the board with five or six previous directors, not including you, Ms. Henson, as interim director. You're not included in this comment. But I never saw one to come before this body or others who said, "Hold me accountable." I mean, you know, it was always evaluation on what I do and not what the results are. And I think I heard you say that several times. Hold me accountable next year for what the results are, not what my efforts are. And I appreciate that.
And that number was $1.3 million for social emotional learning.
Okay, so it went from $1.3 million to, well, that was a total amount?
That was a total amount to include providing support for culturally responsive teaching, restorative practices.
So you dropped it about $300,000.
Yeah, trauma-informed care. And then the two SEL instructional coaches, expanded psychological services, and the two social workers.
So $300,000 would put you back where you really need to be, I suppose, or you want to be.
We can follow up on that.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna turn it over now to Vice Mayor Briley. Let him close us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there are only three people in the room that were here in 2000, Mr. Henson, myself, and you, Mr. Kendall. When we did the first MGT study under the Purcell administration, and it had some comprehensive programmatic investments in both, in both elementary, middle, and middle school. I will take credit and blame that during my second term, we did not find all the funds necessary to implement the recommendations that were made for middle school. Perhaps that's what Councilman Glover was talking about earlier. It's clear to me that if we're gonna hold this administration accountable at MNPS, that we also have to be thinking comprehensively about what investments are necessary in middle school to make... school to make the, the advances that are on the horizon. So, I'm going to ask you, Dr. Joseph, and the members of the school board who are here tonight, to work with the Chair of our Budget and Finance and our Education Committee over the coming year to have a continuing conversation about what investments are necessary, about why they're necessary, and about the, the achievements that we could anticipate from those kinds of investments so that hopefully next year at this time, we'll be implementing some of those comprehensive middle school changes that the citizens and children in our community deserve to reach their full potential. And so, it's not a usual thing for the Vice Mayor to sit up here and do that, but I'm going to do it because I think it is the, it's the next step. When I got elected in 1999, Tying Nashville Together presented this comprehensive view of our school system that was primarily focused on the roofs that were leaking and the toilets that wouldn't flush. And we have made great progress from that day, but there's more progress to be made. So, I'm here to challenge you, Dr. Joseph, and the Chair of our Budget and Finance and Education Committees to work hard over the next year so that we can make some more progress on that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, I was kind of getting used to this seat, but after your comments, I withdraw. I'm not going to run for Vice Mayor. Thank you very much again. We'll be working with you, John and I, we'll get with you and hopefully we can get a lot of stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good to see you, man.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.